Welcome to the Wednesday, May 21st, 2025 worst session, session meeting of the Penfield Town Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Barry?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Leanhouse?
Here.
Ackenden?
Here.
Taglish will be a little bit late.
All right. Before we begin tonight, I'd like to remind everyone that next Friday, May 30th is Penn Fest. Just a reminder, the event is taking place at Harris Island Park from 48 o'clock. Hopefully, we'll have better weather than we have this evening. Okay. Approval of the minutes. Next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
Vote Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
All right. Action items.
All right. Would you like me to jump right in?
Yeah. Sorry, I was looking at Sue like, yes, please.
Sue, would you like to talk about the Chapter 180? So as we mentioned at previous work sessions, talking about some of the challenges with the current sewer regulations, a team of internal staff from various departments, led by the Sewer Department with Alex, our Sewer Foreman, Alex, and we've had representation from Engineering Department, the Building Department, and myself, including code updater extraordinaire Andy Sevegas, and an updated draft local law to amend Chapter 180 has been prepared and presented to the Town Board. You all would have received it via email. You'll notice a couple of things off the bat would be just a blanket reorganization so that there's more uniformity of the articles and the information is organized in a way that's a little bit more clear to understand. And it also, the biggest change is making sure that any design-related criteria are put into the town's design and construction specs and are taken out of the town code. This way, as design standards change, materials preferences change, it doesn't require a local law to update those via the town code. So with the public hearing notice has been submitted so that it meets the requirements for the local law process. That hearing would be scheduled for the June 4 legislative meeting. And so that's really just, we wanted just to provide that overview of information. The draft local law is available on the town's website under Projects of Community Interest. So at this point, there's no action. We just wanted to, if they had, if anyone had questions about the proposed changes, we could talk about that now at work session. Certainly will be an opportunity if needed to talk about them later date. It's mostly just housekeeping types of changes, though.
Okay. Is it something we need to pursue tonight? No?
No, I think typically, again, and certainly Alex is available or anyone who helped prepare them. If there's questions, we can be happy to address those.
Okay. Anything, anybody? Next item is a lot line shift between 1607 Jackson Road and 1585. Mark, Carrie?
You want to, you can jump on that one.
So this is something we actually discovered as the Penfield Volunteer Ambulances came in looking at a future building expansion, pulled up the lot lines and realized that a portion of their building is actually on town property. There was an easement for it, so we kind of did some background research back in the 80s and easement was granted to allow the building on the property. So it was done. But as you look at building lot line separations in the building code, lot lines have setbacks. So there's some other issues that come up of between two parcels and everything else. So this is something we've kind of gone through with the town attorney, discussed with the ambulance corps, obviously, any sort of change of land, the town-owned land with ambulance property is something that would come before the Town Board. So that's, as Carrie's pulling up the aerial, you can see the white property line goes through the middle of one of the bays. So kind of an odd situation of why that was. So, you know, I think this is a point we need to kind of correct that, make an adjustment. Obviously, the building exists. It's been there for many years. It's not new. You know, why it was done and an easement back in the 80s, not really sure. So part of the proposal, and Carrie has that also, you know, is to kind of adjust those lot lines. So I think the same square footage remains. So it's a swap of square footage, you know, would take some off the back. I think we had a little sketch kind of showing.
I will pull up.
Where that went. And then I think also part of the conversation that I had back and forth with the ambulance corps, you know, was about also acquiring a sidewalk easement. So I think that can be acquired under this trade and adjustment as well. So our project is the board's aware is going kind of from their property line north on Jackson Plank and 5 Mile. So it's not coming directly through their property, you know, but it would be time if we can acquire a sidewalk easement, then, you know, later in the agenda, we're talking about 2026 sidewalks and beyond. So as Carrie heads up, showing, you know.
This is, Jackson Road is on the bottom here. So now the orientation is a little bit different than the mapping. So the idea would be to, to swap equal amount of property between the two so that there's no change in either property in terms of a value or a cost. And it's a matter of taking out a square footage that encompasses the building, including a setback. And then that same amount of land would be conveyed or switched or swapped to be appended to 1607 here at the north side of the Penfield Volunteer Ambulance's property.
So I know it's drawn to scale as much as possible, but it does appear to be more or less an equal swap of the land. And it seems to be more of an administrative correction, right?
Yep. And that's would be handled administratively by the planning board because this is a lot line shift and the map has to be filed with Monroe County, and that requires the planning board's chairman's signature. So they'll review it administratively. There's no public hearing associated with this kind of an action.
Puts an impact to town land. That's why.
Yeah, no, no. I mean, I get why.
But I believe it's 4,100 square feet to 4,100 square feet.
Oh, it is really exact.
Exactly. Yeah, if they can zoom in on those, it says property to be acquired 4,100 and then property to be conveyed 4,100. So, you know, had them engineered out. So it is an exact swap.
Okay, so it is pretty, okay, I wasn't sure of what the, the corner line, if that added square footage. But it seems, again, it seems like a very equal trade. It's an administrative correction. There's no cost with the land swap. So I don't really have, and it's also not a residence. It's, they're two town agencies or functioning as town agencies. So I don't really have a concern with this. Do you guys see any? No?
Kind of funky situation to start, but trying to write a pass.
Yeah.
The area that's in red, the new asphalt access to cell tower, is that, that doesn't tie into this at all?
Yeah, that's, they're proposing a cell tower there. That's before, actually, it's been approved by the planning board. I think they just use the same map to kind of show how that fit into it, but that's a separate, separate matter.
Yeah. This is just to show sort of what's already on site. And so, but I think the other thing too is that the, there would be a granting of an easement. So we'd be abandoning the old easement that allowed the building to be built across the property line. You'd abandon that and then add the new easement to allow cross-access and use of the parking spaces. It's very much, you know, sort of similar to other easement, you know, sort of removals and additions that we've presented to the Town Board previously.
Jeff, any issues in your end? Okay. What are you, are you looking for just a vote by approval or are you looking for a resolution?
I think we would do a resolution.
I think just to document the board's approval, the ultimate little map and would go through the planning board as far as a, you know.
And the granting of the easement.
The easement and the mapping and everything else. We just need the approval from the Town Board to go ahead with the land swap.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make that resolution.
I'm sorry, just one question regarding the sidewalk easement. So that's part of this, correct? And so that pretty much would mean that down the road, we could install sidewalks without their.
And they're, and they're aware of it.
And they're good with that, I guess.
Yeah, we've had the conversation about sidewalks already. You know, I spoke with them about it. You know, they seem fine with granting easement. That would, on the planning board's side, we would take care of that, you know, easement on their end. Just wanted to make the board aware that that was also part of the conversation.
Okay. Sorry.
No, no, no. You're driving the fire trucks, Bob. Is there anything else?
I'll second Candace's motion.
Okay. And I, I'm just thinking of Linda. I don't think, if she'll have time to chime in. It's not like we're excluding her, but so to speak.
I, I think she'll be, I mean, there's no harm to that part. I think she'll be, I mean, yeah. And if she does have any, you know, concerns, she can vote no at the time of the resolution.
No, exactly. Well, that's my point.
I don't, I don't think that's very controversial for her.
I don't think so.
Kevin is saying no too, and he knows her best. So you're good. I think she'll be okay.
Okay.
Elseth?
Yeah.
Vote Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Okay. Next one. I'll leave it with Mark and Carrie. Alfius Clark House renovation change order.
Yeah. So I can take this one for you. The, in the Clark House project, or the Alfius Clark House project, excuse me, there was a, the extent of the site improvements didn't extend, covered the, all the entirety of the parking area. So now there are two older light poles in the vicinity, north of the cart barn. I can pull up the map and share that with you. The, that was outside the scope of the project. And now those light poles are 40-plus years old. The, the thought was that we're installing these beautiful site improvements, a new, brand-new building, rehabbing the original Clark House, that now would be a good time to also update these two lighting poles that were outside the scope of the project. That's why they're being managed as a change order. And so it would be amending the electrical contract to allow for two new light poles that were outside the scope to be done at this time while site work's underway in the vicinity. The cost for doing the light pole replacement would be the best opportunity for the lowest cost now, while there's already folks on site and other work is happening. In the, bear with me for a moment. I'm having a hard time talking and controlling the computer at the same time. We did receive an estimate from the electrical contractor that the addition of these two light poles and the, obviously, the labor and work involved in installing them would be an additional $21,781. And so wanted to bring that to the board to see if this is something that you'd like to authorize. If so, we would have a resolution on the June meeting to amend the electrical contract to incorporate this change order. And I can show you a photo of like what the, they look like.
Yeah, that's what I would like to see.
Yeah, sorry. I'm, if I was.
This would also update the fixtures. So it's an older style. So this would upgrade to LED. Should have better light coverage as well as making them, you know, in a similar look and style to what's out there. So it kind of looks more of a cohesive.
Are there other light poles?
There's just these two.
Just the two?
Just these two that are in that kind of disc golf parking lot, if you want to say, or the dog park, kind of a little bit further north. That's, as Carrie's pulling up.
But what about the entire parcel?
We're gonna, I'm gonna just do this for now so I can go to street view. So the area is in this area here, the light poles, and I'll go to a street view so that you can see it.
You can kind of see the shadows. So the two lights are there. The other lights were incorporated in, around the house. So it's just those two parking lot ones that.
And one of the, this one you can see with the tree. So this is the light pole and this is the other light pole that's sort of behind the tree here.
Kind of older shoebox style. So they would replace the base, new base, new wire.
And that would match what's going in, in the new parking area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are there any others that we need to consider doing at the same time?
Not in this, not in this area.
Yeah, everything else, because the, if I look back, if we look back at the, the aerial, the area of the cart barn and all the way through, those site improvements were incorporated because it was part of the project design.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This just, because no changes were happening to this parking area, they weren't captured as part of that design process.
But, but I'm asking for.
Anything else?
Yeah, because I, I understand the immediate vicinity. We all want the same look. But then, you know, is it important to consider any other existing light poles or?
I mean, the other, only other ones, the shadow pines are the ones we just did and completed with pickleball in the, the other end. So that's the only other lighting we have out there.
This is kind of off topic, but there had been some discussion about lighting for the flag at the cemetery, right there to the north, and the lack of access for getting electric to the cemetery. So I think they've been using a solar light. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but.
Yeah.
Solar, so it's at best, you know, sometimes lit, sometimes weak. Just wondering if the addition of these poles gives us any kind of leverage to be able to eventually run a line over and cover that light properly?
I mean, we can ask. I mean, I think you'd probably be better off just pulling a power across the street and you may have to set a new pole or something across. But we can look, you know, just where does that get metered out of and how does that?
We use a really good solar and keep an eye on it.
Where does that run from? But obviously, bringing a new line and a new meter in, you know, obviously, will come at a cost.
Yeah. I think it was a discussion with Tim and Jim Kreckman, I think is what I'm recalling, but.
I mean, we can follow up subsequent to this and at least ask the question and.
Bring another change order.
Or come back with a cost to the board and say it's going to be $100,000 or whatever the number is.
Or maybe it gets to a point where staff might be able to do the rest of that run, you know, who knows? But maybe it gets it closer.
Okay. Can follow up on that.
Thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, we can definitely get more information about that, though, from the contractor.
Seems like a no-brainer.
Any other questions about the? You're okay?
No.
Yeah, no, I think it's, it's good, it's a good change. Make them all new and matching.
Yeah, that came from our, our construction consultant. He was just out there and saying, hey, now's the time. Let's, let's look at it. Let's get a quote. So I thought that was a good call from him.
Right.
You know, that makes sense now. The parking lot's already dug up, the area, you know, to run a new line and replace the bases and make it all look cohesive. It just made sense.
So two poles, two bases, and all the labor to do it?
Yep.
Yep, new fixtures.
And it's not getting any cheaper, as we're hearing, so.
Want a motion for that then to move forward?
Yes, we'd be, we'd prepare a resolution for the June 4 meeting.
Yep. I'll make a motion to move it forward with staff for presentation at the June meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. Sue?
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Okay. Clark Barn Selective Demolition Bid Results. Do you want to start? Mark and Carrie with a brief, or not brief, but.
Absolutely. So the, the bid results were shared with the Town Board. I'll pull up the summary table just for everybody's, to remind everyone. Bear with me. Easier said than done. Bring it out to here for the screen. As you'll recall, Durable Demolition LLC was the low bid on the, for the, the project. The, Bob Moore, Joe Perkins, and myself did conduct a follow-up interview with the contractor and asked a series of questions in terms of their capabilities, their planned approach and scope. Both Bob and, and I'm not going to speak for Bobby, he's sitting right here and can answer, but everybody, the, the experts at the table, not my, not myself not being one of them, felt confident that they, they had a strong handle on the work involved in both options. And so the decision would need to be made as to whether or not to award the contract to the low bidder, the lowest responsible bidder, which in this instance would be Durable Demolition LLC.
Yeah. Before we get with the discussion, I wanted to thank Bob and thank Carrie and Bob and Kevin and Linda and Jeff for all your, your help early, earlier this year. I wasn't able to attend as a lot of the advisory board meetings this year due to a health matter. And I appreciate you guys kind of filling me in on the details and for the board's collective help as well to kind of bring it, bring it to, to this point, I guess. So I've, I've done my best to kind of like review all of the bids and, and I know Linda's on her way, but at least to just open for a discussion, I think the general consensus from what I understand from that advisory board, as well as I think our general sentiments, is that something has to be done, right, with the barn? And I think step one is to bring it down. And my, my hope is to bring it down carefully. And so for me, option A seemed to be the better route of the two. I, I really appreciated the scope for option A to ensure the integrity of each piece. I, I do have concerns about the cost because, again, we are move, it's, we understand it has to come down. But the bid at this stage does not include at an itemized detail, the cost, for example, the storage containers and what storage would cost, because it's hard to estimate right now, depending on how many we would need. And you can see the variation by, by the subject matter experts, right, for container counts or the bid, the cost for construction is not yet detailed here. So, right, anybody doing demo work in their house, you're not going to like bring walls down or start making holes until you know what the end game is and what the final dollar count is. So here, I, I have some hesitations. I want to share that at least openly. But I think it's clear, it has to come down. The town continues to incur financial costs for the fence at additional security to thwart criminal mischief at that location. We have insurance concerns. We have liability concerns. And all of this taken together, I would like to move as quickly as possible with authorizing the bid. And for me, it would be option A to bring it down carefully. And then as anything can go wrong in that careful selective of, right, dismantling of the barn and cataloging it, I don't know. Maybe something happens and it's not, we're not able to salvage as much of it. Nevertheless, I am still leaning towards option A.
I mean, I'm, I'm very concerned about this project, just because of the, you know, the historical significance, the potential historical significance. Certainly, there's a perception that, you know, this is a historically valuable property to a lot of people in the town. So, you know, I definitely would not want to leave it standing and have it further.
Deteriorate.
Deteriorate.
Yeah.
And, and then put the beams in jeopardy. You know, I do think that we need to look at, you know, the future and what we would want to do with this. You know, the, the point was brought up today, you know, on connections with Evan Dawson. They did a segment on this today. And, you know, the, the point was brought up that, you know, one of the, one of the issues that was cited was a real lack of vision for where this was going. And I think that if we started to work on that, that it might be helpful. And I really think that, that now, you know, going ahead with this, that we should pull the public back in and start hearing what they would like to do with this so that we create some sort of vision so that we just don't have beams sitting in storage and try to figure out like what to do with it. You know, there's some really good ideas already being floated about potential use of this. And, you know, I, I think that there's enough community investment apparently that, you know, to start listening again to where we want to go with the project would be a really good thing.
Yeah.
So, so I, I would say that we should, that, you know, if we go ahead with this, that we should open it back up to the public as to where we go from there.
So I, I, I don't want to jump ahead of Jeff and Bob, but I do have a comment to that. But I don't want to jump ahead.
Oh, no.
Jump away. I mean.
All right, I'll jump.
Simply, simply, I agree with Candace's comments to this. I think option A is the logical next step for this project. So, and, and having a vision, having a plan is certainly the next component of that. But, so I tend to agree with you.
Yeah. And my only thought is like, and Kevin mentions, the, the investment we've already put into it, we just want to get, hopefully get a good return out of it. So hopefully, for you to go with option A, the, the company would be, we kind of know where the things are going, like partway through the project, to get a sense of where it's going. But yeah, we need to have a vision and a, a plan.
And one of the things that was brought up too was the actual value of the framing. And that really hasn't been brought up, that this actually is an asset that the town possesses that a lot of other towns don't necessarily possess.
I hear Linda.
And that, that's something to take into consideration too. Somebody threw out the figure of potentially $180,000 of value in, in the framing itself. So I think that's something to be kind of.
It's hard, it's hard to assess, I feel.
It's going to be great timing for Linda to just chime right in.
Okay. It's like, Linda, we're over here.
She's dressed and she's hanging her jacket up to drive. Turn the camera over.
Oh, I lost my train of thought. I think, I think it's hard to make that, that evaluation, right?
Right.
But what I was going to say about the, the potential uses, I know that part of the discussions with the board, as well as other persons, I know staff had their suggestions as well. We tried to poll like, as we could, right, some audience. And there were some uses thrown out. But I, you brought up about bringing the, the public back. And I, I did have a question. And I see that Mark and Carrie, you're going to present on this later for informational items on the campus facility improvement plan. And I know that we have master rec plan. And, and there are already, already discussions on what's happening on the back nine with development of the multi-use trail and mountain biking. And there's going to be additional public feedback. So maybe that's an opportunity where we couldn't keep this project moving, but then invite some broader input at that point? So, okay. So it sounds like, Kevin, if you are also option A? Or no? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Out of, out of what's in front of us, yes. Yeah. I mean, I would definitely want to preserve, you know, the, the main structure for, for future use. Do we want to kind of bring Linda?
Yes. Linda, we're on action item D, Clark Road Barn Selective Demolition. And so we were just really started the discussion of what, what options we are all leaning towards.
Okay.
Recap, it was option A.
Right, right, right.
Kevin, of the two, option A, but wanting to invite more public feedback.
Understand.
Said many other great things. Bob also seemed to be option A, right? And then Jeff also, so.
Yeah, my only thought is just to be mindful of the money we put into it. And hopefully we'll kind of know, like, I don't know if they're, what the chances are finding that beams are not salvageable. I don't know who to look at. But maybe you don't know that until we get into it, right?
So Bob, can I confirm you're going to be project managing, right, the, the, the work?
Yep.
So as, much like the change order request for the Alfius Clark House and the lighting poles, if there is some, a hiccup along the way or drastic change or a change in the scope of, of work as it can be done, is, is that's going to be reported to you?
Yes.
And then reported to Jeff and to the board? So I, right, like Jeff, I guess.
That's the idea, I guess.
We'd monitor finances or any deviations from the scope at that point? Okay. So Linda, did you, did you share any thoughts?
So option A, just to make sure I'm with you all, option A is to carefully disassemble, retain what we can with the concept that we are going to build across the street or?
A future location.
A future build.
A future build. But the idea is that that's the ultimate goal in option A.
Well, it's, yes, salvage and/or reconstruction. It's not necessarily a commitment yet because we.
Understood. But that's the concept.
Yes, correct.
Okay. And the reason durable demolition is now highlighted in yellow is because they're not qualified.
No, they're the low bid.
But also, didn't we find out that they will have to bring on some, that, that they don't have the expertise?
No matter who comes in, we'll have Torsha on contract, just so we've got somebody to, you know, check as we go along. So.
They're qualified to do the dismantling. They, they have demonstrated, and Bob, certainly chime in, that, that every, every reference said they did fantastic work. They followed whatever the guidance of.
With historical barns, right?
Barns and, and building chests. They've done both.
They haven't done, if the question is, have they done a project exactly like the one they're being asked? They have not.
Right. But they've done historical barns similar to it, where they've had to determine the value of the beams, of the wood. They've got a concept on that.
No. So their, their task as a contractor is going to be the physical dismantling at the joint. They have described the equipment that they would use and the methods that they would use to preserve this, the timber structure.
Right.
There, in terms of the, whether the beams are salvageable, their condition, likely the town is going to need to engage, only a structural engineer that's licensed can really make that determination.
And did the other, other?
The second low bid.
Other bidders have that qualified? Other bidders have that quality already built in?
No, they did not.
So nobody had the structural
No, no one had structural, every, no one had structural, they were only strictly, those are the costs for just doing, performing the work as described.
Okay. And did we, did we, I remember the last time we met, the, the idea that they were so much lower, although Empire's not that much higher now.
Right.
Right?
Correct.
Did we find out why, was there any determination how they came in $100,000 less than some of the other ones?
So, there isn't, I think.
This is really hard to estimate, don't you think? Isn't this really hard to estimate?
But there's a lot of factors that can, and I'm gonna speak freely, I hope this is okay, and Bob, you can back me up. Sometimes contractors will throw a bid in, they're very busy and so they price it accordingly so that if they do get the work, they can get compensated. So sometimes people put in artificially high bid in because they don't have, they really almost don't want the work, but if they get it, they would take it. So it's hard to know that for sure. I think the fact that Empire and durable were both similar and I think, and from speaking to the other references and municipalities, they were the low bid by, they were also the low bid, so there, a lot of times they were lower than the other next
Right.
Did they, am I recalling that correctly?
Even on the project, they had, they had, actually, the same two in there and they were about the same distance apart for their projects as well as what they quoted for ours.
Okay, okay. And I apologize if I missed this part of the conversation. My last question would be, and the town has protections, so that this isn't Linda saying, oh, you know, I'm gonna put an addition on my house and the contractor came in and it's like, oh, I can do that for a hundred bucks, oh, what a great deal, but then is horrific.
Right.
And it takes longer, there's problems, there's issues, I'd rather have spent the money, right? Because obviously that, that gave me more headaches, wound up costing me stuff, but we have protections.
Part of it, they had to submit a bid bond with it, so we've got some sureties with it and we can go after their bond if they're not performing, obviously we hold their money, you know, if they're not performing, so we've got
Because as much as I understand what you're saying, it's that.
There is protection and there's a contract in place that protects the town, so if the work is not being performed
Or they mess something up is my bigger concern.
Right. We've got a legal agreement with them to
And both low, low bidders, when we talked to them, were using the same equipment, same number of manpower.
Same estimate of time.
Same estimate of time, the whole, I mean, almost to a T with each other. So they, they have a grasp on what's going on, the other, we never did get the third one to find out what they had for equipment, but
Well, I think it was at that point
We were satisfied with them, with what we had.
Right, understood.
We had the conversation just to make sure that there wasn't a major disparity in what the approach, the planned approach was and they described the scope of work almost identically.
Almost identical.
Okay, and, and my concern, it may be too much and I'll admit that, but we've watched this barn just be out there and go through, you know, things that may have been prevented, not taking care of it, whatever, it's, it's history, but I just don't want that path to continue. I want to make sure that we are, we're on the right track at least. So, yeah, like a little paranoia or over concern perhaps on my part, but that's, that's the reason I keep asking questions.
I have a couple more questions. At one point, a historical barn advocate has, has brought up that perhaps, you know, a timber builder would have had more expertise in this area and it actually offered to, you know, fund that person coming and looking at the barn. Was there a part of this process that prohibited us from doing that?
So, I, when did we have, we had the barn mover, we
We had some
Come out, two, two years ago before this process. I think it was actually either before or during when the, the barn committee first convened, so it's a couple of years ago. Again, there, they, and then there was a, there was a timber salvage company that did come and do a walkthrough, but they did not bid on the project.
And we also solicited a bid from them as well, right?
We, we, yeah, we reached out and they, they came and did the pre-bid walkthrough.
I think you solicited 18 companies, so we took all, every company that was provided forward, we sent it to them.
But I recall, like, at least for this specific bidder, it is someone that we, with an area of expertise and skillset that we had really wanted, but we can't force them to bid.
So to connect the dots, the, the reference that Kevin made to this reach out
Yeah.
We did contact them, they came to the pre-bid walkthrough, we put out the details and we did not.
That was a different person.
It's a different person.
Oh, it's not this.
But it's, we did reach out to a timber salvage person.
The Landmark Society suggested contractors, we sent it to all of them.
Okay.
Yes.
They chose not to bid.
Okay.
Again, we don't know why.
So they were suggested by the Landmark Society.
So there were four contractors provided by our Landmark Society, the technical expert, Megan, who was serving from Landmark Society, those four were directly solicited along with 14 or 15 other just demolition contractors from across, from Syracuse to Buffalo, because you have to sort of spread the net as wide as possible. So those four were contacted directly and then in addition, there was a, a company that specializes in salvaged timber and they actually expressed interest or wanting to get more information. They could not attend the one pre-bid walkthrough that was established. We actually prepared an addendum to add another date.
You accommodated them on another date.
So they could come out and take a look at it before they, to determine whether they could submit a bid and they elected not, they
They didn't.
They didn't, they just emailed saying, we're not gonna be bidding on the project.
Okay.
Provided no reason why.
No reason.
Right.
And my other question was, when, if this is gonna be tied into, you know, as far as public comment, the, the campus project, is that going to be like known to the public that they can comment on this at that time?
Well, it was a suggestion I made tonight, so we don't know yet.
We're jumping ahead of you, Jim.
But I think we, we, we would, we, if it's, if others agree, right? We, we should, we should promote it as well as seeking feedback on everything else, right? Like, if we're going to solicit feedback, I think it should be as much as possible.
I don't think we're limiting feedback on, we're gonna propose a few things and hey, here's what we're looking at, but public, what's your thoughts?
Yeah, because there are some neat concepts of incorporating that into some of the other projects we're doing, so that would fit in.
Yeah, I think a comprehensive plan, I think that's a good idea. It's a comprehensive plan that covers these things that the town has been talking about for many years.
You're stealing our thunder. I'm sorry.
I didn't mean below, we were gonna talk about that later.
It's a relational item. It's okay, come in late, steal thunder, it's no big deal, Linda.
The amount of rain I drove through too.
I think, right, because with additional contractors or things, I, I think early on too, there were suggestions of, oh, I know a friend or I have a buddy or what about the Amish or, right?
Yes.
And I think you had scoped it initially of like, who can still comply at least with New York wage and labor laws and then municipal laws and, and we can't like just hire your best buddy, right? Like there, there are certain constraints and I know that's not what you're asking, but at least to, to fully flush it out, like I think that was done in 2024.
I think this, if this is a, if this was a, you know, a, a structure that was located on a piece of private property and, you know, a third, you know, an independent like sort of nonprofit organization was buying it, then they have a lot more leeway on the, what they can do and how they can do it, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, and actually, that is part of what I was asking.
Yeah.
If there was any prohibitions.
So that's, that is the challenge.
New York State law prevents us from
Because even one of the demolition contractors who I, you know, had spoken to or can't remember how, it was like, I have a great relationship with a group of Amish and I was, if, if they can be paid prevailing wage, then for sure, but I think that was maybe the, the limiting factor for some of the, the folks who specialize or might have more experience with these types of structures.
And I think I had asked this separately because of the warranties and this goes to what Linda was saying, right, of if something does go wrong, right, there's a indemnification clause in here, there's an insurance clause in here and then, you know, the town will be indemnified for losses, but, but, you know
Sure, sure.
You'd have to litigate those because what, we don't even, we don't have an assessed value on the barn, right?
Right, and it's not something that you could get back, right? I mean, theoretically, if something happens to those historic timbers, for whatever reason, granted, we're covered from a financial perspective and necessary to do it, but if the company, we find out, okay, they aren't qual, they weren't ready to handle these historic timbers, they didn't have the expertise needed and therefore we've lost them for whatever reason.
Yeah, I guess from like a, a risk perspective, even if we, like, even if we award it to the highest person, something still could go wrong.
Agreed, agreed.
So for me, I like that, that risk calculation is, is different.
Understand.
We're dealing with very, with old timbers and we're trying to, I think option, so it sounds like you're also leaning towards option A, maybe not durable demolition, but you're, it sounds like you're option A.
Yes, I'm leaning toward option A and again, I agree, anything could happen at any given point with it. My concern is, was that significant difference? And you described it well, it's like, it's not too different, they both looked at it the same way. It's that, is it such a big difference because they simply can't do it? But you all provided the impact and, and the analysis of it, so I'm good.
Okay. All right, then, if everyone is comfortable at this point, I'm going to make a motion to authorize the bid to durable demolition, please.
I'll second that.
Okay, vote, Barry.
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Tecklisch?
Aye.
And I don't know if you were here for it, Linda, but if anything did go wrong or if there was a change in the scope or change in, a change order being needed, Bob is gonna be project managing and then we would have to, we'd, yeah, we'd have to be informed, obviously.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a couple informational items. First one is the town budget process, just wanted to let people know some dates. Want to take a, share the, first date, actually, September 3rd will present the tentative budget, then on October 1st, we'll have a public hearing on the 26 preliminary budget and throughout the month of October, we'll finalize the budget incorporating feedback received during the public hearing process. Then finally, on October 29th, I can't wait, the town board will adopt the final 26 budget and we look forward to a productive and transparent budget season. I know the staff has jumped right into it, the, the department heads, I should say. So, all right, I'll pass this over to Mark and Carrie, campus facility improvement plan.
I'll start, maybe.
Yes.
So I'll provide a little, provide a little update. So at our last meeting, we authorized plant architecture to continue their analysis at the library and the courts. Can report back that they did their internal measurements, mapping to basically doing as of the building, know exactly what we have. I believe right now, they're in the process of doing the interviews of staff, talking about, you know, future needs, wants, you know, growth, whatever, so that's going on with them, so they weren't here tonight to present their findings. You know, maybe we can have them back at our, our June meeting to, to share more of that. So they're in the middle of that now. I see they're talking about the courts and the library, but they've completed the internal mapping design. So once we have that, that kind of does at least these three buildings, so we have the as-built and a kind of rough scope thought of future for this building, for the rec facility and then obviously now library and courts. So that kind of leads into Carrie's, part of the conversation is
So one of the things we're thinking about is now, you know, that's a sort of an inward look, staff providing sort of feedback input, but at some point, if you're looking at this sort of long-range plan for facility, campus improvements, early in the process, it's a great idea to have some public engagement around that. In other words, looking at it holistically, thinking about what are the community's priorities with respect to what investments, what things are gonna be needed at these facilities to
What do they want to see as well?
What do they need or want to see at these facilities, what improvements, you know, will they support ultimately? And so, one of the things we were looking at, thinking about doing is, you know, just staff from the various departments, is now the time to potentially solicit quotes from firms that specialize in public engagement for these kinds of projects. There are local firms that do public outreach and engagement as a service to municipalities for, especially around facility improvements and so if that's something that you think could be valuable, I can put together sort of a scope of what that could look like so that they, there's, we can get some estimate of idea of what that cost might be. The couple of things, the reason that's beneficial and maybe I'm gonna put on my old former private sector hat, is that sometimes having an outside entity, objective third party sort of engaging in those conversations, leading those conversations, it allows for, you know, free and easy communication about what people want or don't want and they can, they have the tools to sort of gather information, gather input, conduct surveys that are well-designed and they have an experience doing that. And I think also, just from, even though our town staff is very talented and we've got a lot of in-house capability, so many projects and I think bandwidth could be a potential challenge, so I didn't know if there was interest in that third party. Certainly, you know, in the future, a design firm could carry that, but sometimes having it be separate from the design process is helpful, just to gather, gather early information about what people are thinking, what types of services or types of physical changes and that, to that point, that could be, you know
It doesn't have to be limited to those three buildings.
It could be other campuses.
What else does the community want, what, you know, look at all of that and then try to boil it down, come back to the board as, you know, but we can schedule specific meetings for input sessions, they can do pop-up stuff at different events, have website, you know, have other survey type things to, you know, engage as broadly as we can, as we know millions watch this meeting at home every week.
Millions.
But besides this, you know, to reach out to the community that we may not on a regular basis, so, you know, those people have expertise and how do you get to the people that we don't regularly hear from or the, you know, we've got the people that are always here and they're very in tune and, you know, tied into the meetings and watch and, you know, provide lots of feedback, how do we reach the others? And that's part of some of those other groups that can, how do you reach out to the greater community and hear from the people that we don't hear from every day, but live here, pay taxes and, you know, wants and needs in the future as well.
And this incorporates, sorry, the, like rec, rec master plan, obviously.
Yeah, we've, we've got the basis of, you know, we've got the rec master plan, we've got the comp plan, we're doing these studies, so we can kind of encapsulate all of those and then, you know, hopefully we can, you know, look at a future vision for the community and what, what they want.
Do you know, has the town done this, used
We've, we've done, not for this specific, for a campus, but we've used them, you know, in other aspects.
This type of vendor, we've used them.
I mean, the active transportation plan, we're using kind of a subset of a group, they're gonna do pop-up events, they're gonna actually be at 4th of July, so they're gonna have a booth at 4th of July saying, where do you guys want to see connections and parks? So it's gonna be a very similar aspect, using, you know, companies, you know, that do this for, in expertise, they can look at the maps and people can, add sticky notes on maps where they see and want connections.
It's planning firms typically, folks that do like master planning, community planning, so I often, you know, you can, I can think of a few just like on the top of my head that would perform this kind of work. It's almost like, essentially like master planning or facilities master planning and to gauge input. Certainly, some of the companies that we work with right now on design projects would, may have that expertise and then there's firms that specialize that do a lot of public, they're known for public engagement, but this could be something that, you know, there's local, regional, state firms throughout the state that do this kind of thing.
So we can develop an RFQ, so, so professional service, so we don't have to have an actual
Bid.
Specific bid, you'd have a request for qualifications that gives a cost to that and that's something, obviously, we can share back with the board, we can vet them out and then come back and say, we've got these different firms, here's the cost of what they're proposing and, you know, here's, you know, what they can provide the community to, you know, gather that data.
I think there's value in having an independent party to collect that data and, and obviously for administrative reasons as well, because we run so lean, it, you can't do eight urgent projects at the same time, right? So I think, so I'd be interested in that and, and so I'm glad that we could expand that scope to incorporate. I know rec falls under that, but I, I'd want to change the scope so that it's more comprehensive as well and get some more global feedback. How do we get the results? Are they reported in the aggregate or are, is staff going to be receiving all of the inputs as, like directly from that independent party or?
I think, well, I mean, I guess part of it is how, however we craft the sort of scope of services, but generally speaking, there'd be data collection, either like community meetings, there might be, you know, like a couple of, however they, however we decide, but public meetings, there'd be, maybe a survey, website interface of some sort.
Sorry, let me ask the question a different way.
Okay.
So say at the survey, so they, say they do a survey, it's an online survey, do we get a report of all of the survey responses or do we get it in the aggregate?
Both, probably.
We do get both, okay.
Yeah, I think you'd get both. Yeah, I think you'd get both, they'd, they prepare like an overview, a report, an analysis or an assessment of the information received, but then you'd also get the raw data.
Right, full transparency, they'd want to give us full.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
It'd be our data.
It'd be our data.
Exactly, okay, okay.
So I, I mean, I guess I have more questions on the actual scope of how it's going to be conducted, but for the concept, I fully support.
Yeah, I do, too. I think it'll be great to kind of try to ferret out those people that we don't necessarily always hear from.
Yeah.
Like Candace said, I'd like to know a little more about how do we get there, right? That first step, is that something they help us with to determine the areas, you know, who do they work with, a committee to determine what areas we want them to look at? Do they provide...
And that's, like, that could be driven by this board, instead of, in other words, I guess, a couple of things, one is I can put together sort of the outline of like an RFQ, like, what we'd be asking for, and that...
Yeah, I think going with an RFQ first would be the way to go. I can support saying, okay, let's get an RFQ, let's figure out what their qualifications are, and I think then the board would want to be involved with what is the LOS, if we decide to go forward with it, what are, what are we expecting?
LOS, levels of service?
Levels of service, yep.
Okay.
What are we looking for?
Deliverables.
Yeah, exactly.
I would question, wouldn't they, I mean, if we only had three areas we want them to look at, they factor in their time, and they're figuring out how they're going to present to us in that RFQ, but if we say there's 12 areas we want them, that's more time, that's more, you know what I mean? Like, we're going to have to give them some guidance, I would think, in order for them to give us a proposal that's going to...
So I think part of it might be...
Pre-proposal.
Say it again?
I, I think the RFQ is pre-proposal, it's not saying, how will you manage all of this, it's saying, give us your qualifications, where have you done something similar, how do you go about it, you know, how do you engage the public? Not saying, how long is it going to take, what's the cost going to be, is...
Well, you could do both, so you could, you could come up with an RFQ asking for the qualifications.
Right.
And then you could have a scenario of explaining if you were going to have, you know, three community-wide meetings, you know, six pop-up events, a community survey, and a final report, what would the cost around that be? Just so you're comparing apples to apples, like, in terms of, you know, because you might like the qualifications of a firm, and then their hourly rate is $700 an hour, you know what I mean?
Are you saying that would be more of a hypothetical, just so we could compare?
Correct, and then, and then you could always customize the scope with the selected or the preferred vendor, and then narrow, really get down to breast hacks of, okay, we really like these menu items, we want two of these and four of those, and a final report, do you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
But I think it would give you also just a sort of an order of magnitude of like, how much does all this cost, is what I'm really trying to hopefully provide to the board for your, you know, so...
Okay. Oh, sorry, I didn't mean, I'm so sorry, I didn't mean, I did not mean to cut you off, go ahead, Kerry.
No, so I just, if you want to, wanted me to prepare that RFQ, I'm happy to do that, and then we could solicit some quotes and just sort of see what kind of either level of interest there is, and just generally, like a ballpark, and we can always do either a, you know, a price range, like, that's how, you know, or, you know, cost per service, so that they have an understanding of, generally speaking, a consultant has a sort of almost like a, you know, a per, like, a public meeting is a certain number, a certain amount of money, like, and if you want three of them, it's going to be that much, you know, that times three.
Sure, sure.
Do you know what I mean? A survey of how, based on our population size, is going to be this much money, generally, you know, like, there might be some range, cost ranges they can provide.
Yeah.
At this time, you're not tied into anything, we're just wanting to see that you're interested in them.
And that's, that's, I think, the key, what I don't want to happen is to come back and say, okay, they've all given us their bids, and now we've got to decide.
No, we don't think we need to.
That's what I want to avoid.
Right, but I think, just, just because I feel, it's hard to draft something when you've got like four different thoughts of how to marry, right, like, because you don't really know what the target is, so I'll just share at least what my expectation is, and I think it's, I think I might be more aligned with Kevin, because we already know the existing facility improvements must be done with the library and courts, I would want that captured in the scope. RFQ will be across the board of, right, experience, what are they, what type of surveys, past use cases, et cetera. I think that's probably going to be more simple for you to draft, but concept-wise, I would think library and courts, recreation, since we've, we're already doing that, and for Shadow Pines, I think it does naturally fall as a component of recreation, and those would be my three core areas for this comp survey, and then I would want to see what, what can they do in, the feedback solicited in those three areas, because I, I think Bob said it earlier, I don't really want 12 areas, because then it's too much for the board to digest, we don't have funds even allocated for the next three years to take on 12 capital improvement projects for all facilities, I think we need to narrow it down, and then the bid then becomes much more narrow in scope for us to be able to compare apples to apples, because I think if you see like 50 lines, and I have to do 12 comparison columns, that discussion's going to be a nightmare, so I, again, my three areas for focus would be library, courts, and recreation.
Okay.
So is that as, as part of the RFQ?
I would, I would, me personally, just to most efficient use of time and the initial outreach, I would want the RFQ with some description of the project's scope in there, so that they can give us RFQ targeted to those three areas, if we all agree to look for.
Yeah, so I think that I can...
Wait, hold on, we go, how do you guys think, how do you feel about that, including the RFQ and some description scope of work in the first outreach?
I mean, if that was part of our, like, hypothetical situation...
Yeah, I mean, we're not married to anything yet.
Do we want to include Town Hall in that? Because that's another major part.
Town Hall, campus? Okay?
Oh, yeah.
I'm okay with...
What are your thoughts, Kerry? Because I agree with what Bob said, is you don't want to say, okay, now we've got 100, and they, they weren't prepared for that, but nor do I want to put any early, very early walls up.
Sure.
You know what I mean?
No, no.
And it's like a...
So I think the...
So I want to hear what your thoughts are.
So if I was, if I'm, as I'm thinking out loud, again, please don't hold me, my thought would be that the, description would be that the town is contemplating a long-range facility improvement plan, that would incorporate and anticipates the following potential improvements, and explain Town Hall modifications and modernization, it's the location of, future location of a new recreation facility, renovations and or, like, and space and needs of library and courts, and that as part of that process, the town wants to understand the community's needs and desires for the future.
That's the key, that's the key right there, I think, is that part of finding out what the community needs and their thoughts are, might reprioritize something, you know what I'm saying?
Right, and so then, I think that it's going to be a matter of, with the, with the framework of future improvements to the new campus facility, modifications to library and courts, and the potential improvements to Town Hall, and we can sort of throw in any other town-owned properties as needed, because could, you know, that, we want to have some understanding and have a conversation with the community about what the needs are. We know what the staff needs and future growth from town side is looking like, and then you want to sort of maybe understand what the community, and also, this is an opportunity to understand what the, what the community will support financially, potentially.
Right, yeah.
Does that make sense, or no?
It does, but I, and I hear what you're saying, so I, you know, it'll be easier to react to an RFQ once we have something, but again, I, you know, we have committees that have already poured a lot of time, public feedback, I mean, you were there for the master rec.
Sure, sure.
We've done some prelim work where we've already identified recommendations.
And I think we would point to that in the RFQ.
Yeah, so I think this, right, because I'm expecting this is going to be thousands of dollars, it's not cheap, so I don't want like an open-ended, I would want...
Yeah, and they're not, we're not asking them to design anything, we're asking them to...
No, I know, you're collecting, you're soliciting feedback, but again, I, you know...
Three focus areas, but it doesn't preclude anybody from just providing a comment about...
Yeah, like free text, or whatever you want, they want to put in a survey, it's fine.
Still provide that comment and feedback, we would just have some core areas that, here's where we're kind of focused, but the community can provide whatever input they want.
And this would be a huge project, and we're looking to allocate monies for, you know, years in the future, so it's worth to get outside counsel for this, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, this is, we just started talking about it, this is just, you know, early stages, collecting information and data before we, you know, start down the road at all.
And I agree, because I think getting, if they do a good job and truly can get to the people that we don't hear from, the community, I think that's a good thing for residents, too, right? They'll be involved, they'll feel like they're involved early on, they'll, they'll feel like they're part of it, and we're reaching, doing all we can to find them.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's definitely the aspect that I like the most, is, you know, that, you know, there's a certain, you know, element of folks who are always in the know, but then there's the folks who are like, oh, man, I wish I'd known.
And I think that's the majority.
Let's really try to reach them, proactively.
People don't know until they watch something coming out of the ground, and they're like, what's going on over there?
Yeah, exactly, so let's try to head that off as much as we possibly can.
Yeah, and I think, though, and from, like, having it be contained, so it's not open-ended, and to Bob and Candace's point, that it's not like, you know, the plan of 1,000 points, where like, then it maybe can become untenable, like now, and I think part of it is going to be just crafting it in a way that's coming at it from the interaction standpoint, because it's going to be easier for them to classify the number of times that they're having to do outreach, like, and what the format's looking like, that's going to really be the driver, I believe.
Yeah, what means and methods for them.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so you're going to try to take first pass at an RFQ for board review?
Yep.
Sounds like there's board consensus, at least, in supporting the project, so no resolution tonight, right?
Yeah, no resolution, and honestly, no resolution really would be needed until you wanted to award a contract to somebody, if you so choose to do that in the future.
There's not a cost associated with RFQ, so...
Yeah, no, this is just, yeah.
Yeah.
And we'll make that clear, that the town is considering, you know, utilizing these services, so there's no commitment to move forward.
Right, right.
Pete's very good at making sure that there's a little clause in there.
People just show up all of a sudden, right, with surveys in hand, right?
Exactly.
Let's go.
All right. So we got our sidewalk discussion, Mark?
Sidewalks, so...
It's the time of year.
It's the time of year, we're back, we're back to springtime, so, again, putting the call out to the public, not that we don't have lots of suggestions already, but, you know, we typically every year try to put out, you know, an opportunity for the public to provide comments on where they'd like to see sidewalks, interconnections, the topics can become, you know, very involved with the active transportation plans, that's going to look at interconnections between town properties, parks, and everything else, you know, but looking to put that out, and then didn't know if the board, at your June 4th meeting, wanted to have a community input session, not calling it a public hearing, not calling it a, you know, information meeting, I'm not sharing information, it's just, you know, that's an opportunity amongst email, phone call, you know, whatever else, but just, you know, put it on the agenda that if anybody has...
Specific sidewalk.
Specific spots they want to share, I've heard from people already, they know it's that time of year, they didn't get theirs last year, so they've contacted me, stopped in, you know, we've been actively meeting with the residents for the 2025 sidewalks, so we've got the design back, it's ready to go back to the DOT for final approval. In the meantime, we sent the maps out to all the residents that are out there, we've been meeting with them, going through them, so they understand what they're doing, you know, getting their sign-offs if we need, you know, easements or reading releases, so we've been, you know, actively working through that, and we're looking at a, you know, late summer, fall, you know, construction on the 2020, 2025 piece, so just looking at, you know, as we look towards 2026, reach out to the public again, provide your input, comments, feedback, we'll compile all that in engineering and come back to the board, you know, at a future meeting, saying, here's all the suggestions we want, it's also kind of timely as we're talking about budget season.
Right, right.
What are we budgeting for sidewalks, obviously, that impacts how much we can do, you know, where else, so that was why just as an informational item tonight, and then if we want to put that out, you know, on the web for the June 4th meeting...
I think we should.
That, we can make that available, that's not the only opportunity, obviously...
Right.
They can email the engineering department, engineer@penfield.org directly, they can, you know, call me, contact, you know, anybody in the engineering department, we'll continue to collect it.
It's engineer@, not engineering.
Yes.
Man, just, you said it so quickly, it might, people might try to...
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, apologies.
I agree, I think that's, I'd like to see that, I think that's a good idea.
So we'll ask Amy to list that, right after the public hearing, for chapter 180 will be on the June agenda, and so right after that would be the public input and for sidewalks, 2026.
2020, yeah.
2026.
Very, very clear, 2026.
People aware, it's not this year, we're, and same thing, once we decide where, we've got to get survey, we've got to get into design, permitting easements, so, you know, it takes, you know, a long time to kind of get everything ready to go for, that's why we're working a year ahead.
I know we had some vendor issues in the last, maybe a couple of years ago, any signs of any issues this year? You think everything will go as scheduled, or too early to tell?
Bob, what, I didn't hear what you said.
There were some vendor issues in getting the projects completed.
We may need to bid out our sidewalk contractor, we're talking to Pete about that right now. Obviously, costs of sidewalks, we bid them out as a three-year, we're at the end of three years, and I don't think with costs, prices they are, you know, they may not be able to hold that price. It says in the contract, it has to be agreeable to both parties, so we're working on that now, whether we can use a piggyback clause from another community or not, but working through that with Pete, so you may hear that, you know, we're going back out to sidewalk